Good evening. I'd like to call to order the November meeting of the Monroe County Public Library Board of Trustees. We'll begin tonight by going around and introducing ourselves and sharing a book that we're reading, if we care to do so. So Fred, how about if we start with you?
Hi. My name's Fred Reislinger. I just started a book today that's a biography of President Zelensky, the premier of the places being attacked by the Soviet Union. So it's an interesting first 20 pages or so that I'm reading. It's about his family.
I am Kari Essery, and I am reading The Song of Achilles. I think it was popular about 12 years ago or something, so 10.
Hi, I'm Jamie Burkhardt. I've just checked out a new book, The Cruel Prince by Holly Black, the first of her series.
Hi, I'm Greer Carson, and I am rereading A Supposedly Fun Thing I'll Never Do Again by David Foster Wallace. And our family is taking a break from video games because the Xbox got taken away.
Ouch.
Yeah.
I am Christina Harrison, and I am reading Gravebooks by J.A. White.
Michelle Wash, and I am reading How the Word Is Passed by Clint Smith.
Kathy Loser, and I just purchased the book by Michelle Obama, The Light We Carry. We've got lots of them in.
We'll begin first with our consent agenda items. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of last month's board meeting and the minutes of our last work session, monthly financial report, monthly bills for payment, the personnel report, and the board meeting calendar?
Some moved.
Second.
Do you have any questions or discussion about those items?
I wanted to make a quick clarification on the financial report, in particular, the employee earnings report. The former ACS or Access and Content Services Department is now two separate departments, that is, content development and circulation services respectively. The change was part of our continuous improvement initiative in looking at the function size and interdependence of the various roles and teams that are involved in managing collection development and circulation of materials. So it's just to clarify, when you look at the financial report and you see those departments listed, you're not going to see ACS anymore, you're going to see circulation services and content development.
I just had a question on page, I believe it's six. Yes. It says that our operating surplus is in the negative by $730,000. Is that correct? Am I reading that correctly?
That's what it says. Yes, thank you, Gary.
You are reading that correctly, and the reason is that we get the bulk of our revenue twice a year in big chunks, and so we're going to get, at the end of December, roughly $4 million, which will bring us back to a positive number.
Thank you. I figured, but you know, you see that and you go, "Oh."
Yeah.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda items signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Next, we'll move on to our director's monthly report from Greer.
Okay, some highlights for this month. The page views for our MCPL digital site doubled from September to October. This is our own collection of unique digitized items, which lives on a Content DM site, Content DM being the industry leader in digitization hosting and metadata support. And as we talked about briefly before, it currently features our area school yearbooks, including Bloomington High School from 1908 to '72, then the North and South split from '73 to 2018. It also includes Elletsville High School from the '30s through the mid-'60s, and then what became Edgewood High School from '65 to 2018, and the Steinsville High School from 1933 to 1963. So we continue to fill the gaps in the yearbook collection wherever we can, and we are looking to upload digitized copies of the graphic, which is the Unionville High School yearbook, by the end of this year. We do continue to see a positive correlation between our monthly e-library resource feature and its respective page views. This month's example is Frigil, which saw a 26% increase in page views. As you might expect, the correlation between the monthly feature and the actual use of the resource in question is somewhat less consistent, but we do see varying degrees of increases each month and depending on the resource itself. So we know that this is an effective marketing technique. Our shelf reading project in circulation services has resumed. This is a schedule of shelf reading that we maintain throughout the year to ensure that each physical collection is in proper order on the shelves. It's a very important part of the circulation services department's work, and it contributes to the accessibility of our collections. Materials are kept in the right order and are spaced appropriately from shelf to shelf. The companion to shelf reading, of course, is weeding, and this is something we also like to adopt in terms of an ongoing schedule. It's really the combination of careful weeding and consistent shelf reading that makes a physical collection accessible and attractive to patrons, so we're glad to resume that process. Our children's patrons voted on an in-house toy as part of the summer reading program, and the Ozobots were the winner. So these are tiny robots, and there are two different types. There's bits, and then there's a larger, more sophisticated version, so we're doing the Ozobots bits. They're about the size of a golf ball. The kids sign them out at the desk and run them along paper tracks, which makes them perform simple functions, and you can use the tracks to sort of create random answers to questions, like a Magic 8-Ball would. They're increasingly popular STEAM education tools because they help teach basic coding and an understanding of circuit design. Our teen zombie prom dance event entitled A Night to Dismember drew 75 attendees, 50 of whom arrived in the first 20 minutes. I think that's phenomenal. This is just one of the many ways our teen services department is engaging more and more teen patrons. Children's Services also held a Halloween dance party, and it was the first after-hours program that we have held for that audience. Also fantastic attendance, something like over 120 or 130 attendees, and that's fantastic. Our vital learner participation is now back to pre-pandemic levels. Thanks to our new vital staff members and our very dedicated vital volunteers, we're continuing to support adult literacy learners to the tune of 930 hours of free educational services from July through September. We held two special in-house events in October, both at Lower Cascades Park. The first was our annual Fall Staff Cookout, which brings staff together outside of the library for an informal social event, and the second was our annual volunteer appreciation event, which allows us to express our deep appreciation for the nearly 200 volunteers we have here at MCPL. Also a very informal social event, and both were very well attended. So happy to answer any questions about the report.
I guess vital is booming, which is amazing, and I know there are still quite a few families that are on the waiting list. Is there any way we can advertise to get more volunteers? Is that something that someone does?
Yes, we have, actually, the rain works a lot in volunteer coordination. Bethany herself, of course, is heavily involved in that, and we can certainly look at ways we can meet those needs maybe faster than we are. Because we have such a large pool of volunteers and because vital volunteering is a pretty specific thing, I'm not sure how far we'll be able to go.
And they need training and all kinds of things.
The training's a significant piece, but we can certainly take a look at that, yeah, because there is a big need.
Yeah. We've, I know we have a refugee family that we're sponsoring from our church, and the waiting list is quite lengthy, and, but, I mean, it just shows that the service is well-loved.
It certainly does. Well, we'll see what we can do with that in terms of bolstering volunteer hours for vital.
And I just want to compliment the teen staff on all their creative and wonderful things. I mean, I know all the other departments are too, but that was the one that jumped out this month.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any questions or comments for Greer? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to old business. And the first item under old business is an update of the fiscal year 2023 budget and the DLGF review from Gary.
The Department of Local Government Finance, DLGF, has notified us that there was a problem with the calculation of the 2023 total spending budget that was approved last month. The total spending budget was allowed to increase by 5% for 2023 over the previous year's budget. The 5% figure is the growth quotient. The spending total on the 2023 budget adoption form that was approved in October was calculated by starting with the previous year's adopted budget and increasing it by 5%. The DLGF said the problem is that there was an adjustment to last year's adopted budget, and the final budget numbers were slightly lower. The DLGF figure for the maximum 2023 spending budget is lower than the budget that was approved last month by $1,832. The DLGF initially said that the library's 2023 budget will be rejected because of this $1,800 difference. Later, they said that our request to make the $1,800 adjustment is still being considered. So the final decision on the adjustment and final 2023 budget numbers should be available by mid-December. If the DLGF decides to reject the 2023 budget that we submitted, it would mean that the 2023 tax levy would stay at the 2022 amount. The 2023 increase we expected from the 5% growth quotient amounts to about $350,000. So for planning, I have looked at the impact to operations if the DLGF rejects our request to make the $1,800 adjustment. So for 2022, I am projecting an operating surplus of $400,000 to $800,000. If we need to use some of the 2022 operating surplus to make up for the reduced 2023 tax levy, we would have the funds in the bank to do that. There's also $2 million in the bank for rainy day and LRF fund reserves. A DLGF decision to reject the 2023 budget will not impact spending plans related to completing and staffing the new branch, and it will not reduce any planned library service. So by the end of December, we'll know what the DLGF decision is on the budget adjustment, and we'll also know how much operating surplus we have to work with. So a long-range finance plan will be presented at the January board meeting when we know these things, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Seeing none, thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
The next item under old business is an update on the Southwest Branch construction from Greer.
Okay, concrete for the main staircase is complete. We are still waiting on concrete for the completion of the lower-level garage slab. If you remember, there's been a bit of a supply issue with concrete in our area, but we're getting there, and we expect it to be completed when it needs to be completed. I'm glad to see the staircase done, though. They have started hanging drywall on the main level in various areas. The TIVEC and metal framing for the canopy are both completed. Duke Electric has been on-site to approve the transformer pad, and we hope to have permanent dedicated site power by the end of December. After many months of reviewing furniture and shelving options, we're ready to proceed with ordering furniture and shelving for the branch, and we'll need to do so by the end of November in order to ensure delivery in March. Shelving has come in at about $120,000 more than we originally budgeted back in 2020. This is not too surprising, given the changes in the economy over the past two years. Furniture, however, has come in significantly higher than we originally budgeted, about $350,000 more, and this is due to a combination of product quality and availability, changes in freight costs, and overall increases in product costs across the board. Our branch construction budget can handle these increased costs, but it also means that we will likely need to rely on a portion of the year-end operating surplus that Gary just referenced to cover any remaining change orders that we may incur between now and March as we approach the substantial completion deadline of April 1st. And finally, there was a nice but brief article on the front page of the Herald-Times this week, sharing an update on branch construction progress and our grand opening timeline of mid-May, mid-May 2023, and we are very much hoping for a full feature article closer to March or April of next year on the branch.
Any questions or comments for Greer?
I just would like to say it was nice to see that article on the front page, and I was discussing with friends, and I did have a couple of friends go, "It's great," but they didn't even talk about books. I said, "Well, that's probably because the reporter's focus was on something different."
It was very much focused on how is progress of the, of construction progress going along? Have we hit any major hurdles? And are we still on time for opening in mid-May? And less about, hey, what's going to be inside, which up to this point has been the media focus when we've had it. We had a TIU article sometime earlier in the year, and it was very much like, how's this branch different from the rest of your facilities? What are the programs going to be got? This was like, are we still on track? Are we opening in May? Yeah.
So maybe in May, we can talk about books.
Sure. We could talk about books before May. We'll have all of our opening day collection materials in March. So we'll have that whole collection to talk about by March.
That'll make my neighbors happy.
Good. Good.
The community is quite excited, even the hairdressers, they're talking about the new branch.
Oh, wow. Okay. That's good to hear.
Next on the agenda is the, is an update on the compensation study from Greer also.
So this is just to kind of keep everyone on the loop on what's been going on behind the scenes. The staff surveys and staff focus group sessions have now been completed. We wrapped up the focus groups last week. The market data is still being compiled by NFP and should be completed very soon. We will hold an all-staff meeting after the Thanksgiving holiday to review some of the feedback that we've heard from staff and to talk about some of the themes that emerged from those focus group sessions last week. And following that, we'll have a final report from NFP to share with you all, along with the draft proposal for compensation plan improvements beginning in 2023. So we are still very much on track, and it's been a pretty positive experience for everybody involved, and we're very happy to be working with NFP on this and very eager to see what their findings are.
Thank you, Greer, for those updates. Moving on to new business, the first item on the agenda, we will entertain a proposal to change our health insurance from SIHO to Anthem, and also a cost splitting update. Do I have a motion to approve the move to Anthem and the cost splitting update?
Second.
Okay, and we have Becky to give us just another brief review. We talked about this in our work session last week, but she's just going to kind of give us a snapshot of what we're doing.
So following up from the work session last week, we had some really great questions on the overall budget, and so I wanted to give a brief overview on that. Just to summarize from last time, we have been working all year to look at the benchmarking, all the data that we've got from staff feedback, surveys. Our partnership with NFP has provided some very useful insights. We went to market to bid for all of our plans with JA Benefits and their support. We've reviewed all of the plans, looked at it based on the premium, the network, accessibility tools, plan designs, staff feedback, and market data to come up with our proposal. So to review, there's a page in the packet that goes all the way back to 2017, for the sake of your eyes, I only went back to 2020 on here because it was very tiny. But this is the employer cost. So the first page in the packet has, or not the first page, it's page 85 in your packet, has the high level, so it's got the health insurance premium, so that's the annual from the carrier themselves. So that has our current 2022 SIHO rate, and then the renewal with SIHO, as well as the bid from Anthem, and then it's got our total annual employer cost, and so that's what's projected up here. And then I also highlighted some of the changes that we're proposing for the overall benefit package. This is the employer cost for benefits, so this is what the Monroe County Public Library pays for our total benefit package, and so you can see year-over-year the total cost for each of those lines. So health insurance, obviously, is our biggest cost, followed there closely by the Health Savings Account, and then we get down into Everside, our dental insurance, short-term disability, long-term disability, group term life, and our employee assistance program. So you can see the trends year-over-year, and you can also see the total for the benefit cost down at the bottom. And you can see that this is very much in line with previous years on the increase in total, and also very much in line with, you can see the health insurance premium does decrease because we did get a decreased cost on the bid. Questions on this?
I just wanted to point out, it appears that the Health Savings Account employee contribution has like skyrocketed, but if you go back to like 2017, 2018, 2019, the Health Savings Account employer contribution used to be $72,000, $73,000, $80,000, $79,000, then it dropped significantly, and now it's back up again. So it's not like...
Did it drop because we said... We're going to do this initially to get it started, and then once it gets started...
I can't remember.
Then we won't?
Might be, but...
I thought we kind of juiced it at the outset so that people would be encouraged to do it.
Oh, okay.
That was my memory.
Okay. I just would maybe say every year, we maybe can't do that big of a, I mean, it's great that we can, but maybe we can't do that big of a Health Savings Account because that's a big chunk. Just commenting.
Yeah, the year-to-year increases, I mean, just looking at it, you know, if you look at just the total cost to us, starting in '17 to '18, we went up 7%, then around 3.7, we went down 3% in '19 to '20, then up 5 point some, then in '21, '22 was a 10.8% increase, and then '22, '23, it's a 6.7% increase, but that looks like we chose that to go up, right?
Yes.
That's our choice to go up.
That's right.
Because our health insurance came in lower.
Mm-hmm.
But somehow, we're going to do more for the Health Savings Account, and that's going to save us? Does that encourage more people to do it? How does that work?
Well, it also works as incentive for good employees.
No, that's what I mean, but I mean, how does the Health Savings Account, I mean, like I said, I thought when we started it, we go, "Let's put a bunch of money in, and then that'll save us because people will get this and they'll be maxed out, and then they can use that, and they'll be encouraged to do it because it's this great benefit." But then it went down because I, because I thought we stopped, or we were only doing it for new employees, or however we were doing it, and now it's going back up. So where does that money go?
So the Health Savings Account, the employer contribution for a Health Savings Account goes into the HSA accounts for the employees who have enrolled in those high deductible health plans. That money helps to offset the premium, or the out-of-pocket costs that those employees would incur, and helps us have a more even spread in how employees are using their plan. Those HSA, high deductible plans typically help to keep our premiums lower year-over-year, and so continuing to create a plan where those HSA contributions and those high deductible health plans are something that our staff can afford, continue to really help us year-over-year to keep those premium rate increases down and to help our staff.
Right, so that's what I'm trying to figure out. So you take $105,827, and you say, "Okay, that's going to go into the employees' HSA this year."
Yes.
And then next year, maybe it's zero.
Yeah, I mean, we can change the health, the employer contribution can change year-over-year, and you can see...
Well, it has, I mean, looking at it.
Yes.
So there were some years where it was, where it was $17,000, $14,400 versus $105,000. So the year it's $14,400, what is that? I mean, you have 27 employees on HSAs or however many, I don't know how many we have, I'm kind of going from memory from last week, but how did, how did they split up $14,000? How does that work?
So the HSA contributions for 2022, we're only giving $300 for the 2800 deductible and $500 for that $5,000 deductible plan. Those only go to employees who are covering themselves, and so employees who are covering anyone beyond themselves don't actually get anything in their HSA, and so it's a smaller contribution that's only going to a part of our staff who are in those HSA plans.
So how does it get to be $100,000?
So that's a HSA contribution.
On page 90, it says exactly how much money everybody gets in their HSA account.
So it's changing. That's what you're getting at, right, David? Like, why is it different this year?
Yeah. Why is it $100,000 one year and $14,000 another year? That makes me feel like, oh, as an employer, one year we gave you this much, and one year we gave you that much. Is that not true?
Yes, that's very true.
That is true. So one year, it's like, woo-hoo, great year. So...
But the whole plan is changing, right? So look at the big picture, the big perspective.
I get that, but it's kind of interesting because it's like, oh, we're encouraging people to do this, but are you encouraging people to do it if they go, "God, remember that year when we only got..."
So we need some consistency, is what you're saying.
Wouldn't you think?
So maybe from here on out.
I'm just asking. I mean, how does this work? And how does, last week I was asking for big-picture numbers, now I'm asking for small-picture numbers. Just so you know, just so you know, I recognize I'm being obnoxious about that, but now I'm asking from the employee's standpoint, is that, and also, you said 300 and 500. How does that get, it's $100,000.
So the $100,000.
What's that?
So this is different. That was last year what was done, right?
Yes.
This is something brand-new.
So what are we doing with $100,000? That's what I'm asking.
So that's these blue lines here, the HSA contributions. So we've restructured with the new plan, we're giving more money in the HSA accounts, and so it's going to be...
Hopefully, we can continue, right, David? Hopefully, that would be the plan.
Well, yeah, otherwise, it's kind of a bait and switch. Hey, do the HSA. Now, if you're healthy, it's like, that's cool, I got $1,300 last year, $1,342.56, and I didn't use it, and I still have it, and when you go on Medicare, you can continue to spend it. I happen to know that. So that's kind of cool. And you can actually spend it on other people, which is pretty cool, too, so you can, you know.
And tissues, probably.
So, yeah, okay, so you're saying employee-only is $1,300 and $2,300, and so somehow this all adds up to $100,000, but then next year...
Who knows?
If the, if the health insurance bill goes like we have seen it do at times, and then maybe we can't afford to do it, and then we say, "Sorry, we can't do that."
Yeah, I mean, we can always restructure the Health Savings Account contribution, that's up to us to decide how to do that, and so this is an effort to make it more like it had been previously, where it was, you were seeing 70s to high 70s for the annual cost on the HSA, and we've gone down in the last two years to $17,000 and $14,400, and so this is bringing it back up in line with that. That helps our staff hit those out of, or pay for those out-of-pocket costs that they have on a Health Savings Account. The high deductible health plan, the deduction, deductibles have gone up year-over-year. The high deductible health plan, the deduction, deductibles have gone up year over year. And so it makes sense that we're contributing more because those deductible amounts continue to raise. That's an industry amount that they're raising those. And so that increases the amount that our staff have to pay out of pocket.
And the staff can, or can they, put in pre-tax dollars?
Yes, they can, and they have been.
Their own, up to a certain amount into the HSA.
Yes.
Does our contribution reduce the amount they can contribute?
So the annual amount that the IRS allows is the employer and employee contribution together. And so what we're contributing to the HSA is added to the employee's amount, has to hit that. It can only be that IRS maximum.
And the beauty is that if they were healthy and didn't use it, they could take it with them. It is portable.
Yes.
Okay.
So it's a lovely benefit.
It's neat. I mean, it's really neat. But you do wonder, like, when I see it go from fourteen-four to a hundred grand. Yeah, they just wouldn't choose that plan.
Yeah.
There's a lot of people who would probably go, I'm not choosing that. But especially if you're young and healthy, and you have the... And the other thing that I never was able to figure out is you're able to invest it like it's an IRA, essentially. And you could invest it. You could lose half of it. What a benefit. Hopefully, the market would go up. That's why I said young.
So I have a question.
Yeah.
Is this consistent with what peers are doing? This volatility in one year, you could get a significant contribution from your employer, and the next year, you could not? Like, is this what our peers are doing? Is this sustainable?
So the decrease that we had in 2021 and 2022, I'm not sure. I wasn't here when we did that, so I don't know why we made that decrease.
Does anyone know?
I don't think, Michelle, in whatever is happening, I don't think, especially when moving to a new plan, I don't think it's atypical to see changes.
There's several factors.
I think so.
There's several factors related to this. In those 2021 and 2022, the rates increased, and we had less money to, you know, provide. Also, we had, we were trying to save funds by doing this. And we know, we found out that a lot of our staff shifted over to our PPO plan because they couldn't afford the high deductibles when they didn't have any money in their accounts. So then you have people either going to a more expensive plan, which is a PPO, or putting off healthcare and not seeking healthcare because they can't afford it. So this is an effort, especially since we have this opportunity with making the change to Anthem, that we can now provide more in the PPO. Our rates have gone down, and it's time to make that move. And we'll continue to make assessments as we go through. As everybody knows, healthcare is... Every, you know, everybody's making shifts, and so that's what we're doing this year. But we did have a lot of people move over to the PPO plan, and it's the more expensive plan. And we expect, we don't know, that we'll have more people move back to the HSAs. And we do have people that are, you know, they save that money, and they love having that. That certainly is an attraction. When I go to, you know, try and bring new hires in, that's a big question. So it's part of our attraction and retention, as well as we don't want people to feel like they can't seek healthcare and that we're putting barriers in front of them by providing much too high. The other point is, is that we weren't giving any kind of HSA contribution to children, you know, people with children, and families, and spouses. So we're trying to even out the cost across the plans and still make it a very useful product for everybody.
So follow-up question. Because I heard you say it's a good recruitment tool, essentially, for bringing on new hires. So if you hire me this year and tell me that I'm going to have an HSA contribution, should I be nervous that next year I won't have that contribution?
Well, that certainly is not our intent. We can say this is a correction. But we also have to look at the market, what it was two years ago. And we didn't have much choice because the cost was way up.
Right.
So if we can even it out, it's, you know, you know, changing environment, lessons learned, and also doing the best we can for staff, as well as being good, you know, stewards of the money that we do have to support our staff.
I think one thing to keep in mind, when I joined the board in 2017, it seemed like for several years, you were coming to us every year saying, hey, great news. The premiums are either dropping, or they're staying the same. That we really had a rate freeze for several years. It wasn't until about two years ago, when you were like, well, those years of those rate freezes and those decreases, they're over. And now, all of a sudden, the rates started jumping up. That for many years, I would say, at least the first three or four years I was on the board, there were no increases in the premiums at all. And if nothing else, they might have gone down a little bit. And so it wasn't until two years ago, when all of a sudden, boom, those health insurance costs... Because we were surprised, because in other areas, they were going up, but ours weren't. And then, all of a sudden, they started to jump.
Yeah, it's interesting. I think you have to be, you know, it's educational for that high deductible. I know my wife has one, and she always says, this doesn't cover anything. I say, I know, it's a high deductible. You have to pay. And she's like, no, it should be. So I need to get her on a different plan, obviously. But so, an employee wouldn't be happy if they expected to just pay a copay or something like that. That kind of plan might be a real disappointment. So although, starting out, we're putting in sixteen hundred dollars or something like that, I mean, that's a good jumpstart to all your deductible, to all your expenses.
But it also might help us control costs. Now, this is purely, you know, if less people are in the PPO, which is our more expensive plan, then how will that impact us next year? And getting people to go see the doctor when they need to, rather than an emergency.
Does the clinic help with that?
Well, that's part of it, yes.
Because they shouldn't have the thing of, I go to the doctor, and I have to pay everything with my high deductible. It's like, well, but I also have the safety valve. I can go to the clinic for a lot of common things that would come up. So that should be a... I mean, it's a wonderful one-two punch. I wish I had had that option.
And in the past two years, it was hard to promote the clinic because nobody was going anywhere because of COVID. We're going to be doing a lot of promotion this year and reconnect and see, okay, is this really the solution for us? It is. Becky's done a lot of study, and it's the only onsite clinic that we would have access to. We're not, you know, employer that can create our own clinic.
Does the clinic have virtual options?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. So, and we've looked into virtual options for other types of support, but it's not the same as onsite.
And Anthem provides virtual, too.
Moving to Anthem, will that be an option for...
They definitely have virtual. I don't, I assume it's in our plan, but they definitely have, because I have the PPO with Anthem.
But it's a, it's an ever-changing landscape.
Because they can.
Right.
Accessing healthcare here is like the Hunger Games. We needed to go to an urgent care. And I sat there for six hours one day, and I said, why are all these people going in front of me? And they said, well, you got to save your spot online. I said, okay, well, new process for me. I'll be sure to do that next time. Do you know, we had to wake up, we had to set alarms to wake up at midnight to reserve a spot online. Okay, the spots filled up within forty-seven minutes. And then we got there, and still, we're told, we had a two-and-a-half-hour wait. Okay, so having this type of clinic for MCPL staff is great because accessing healthcare here is insane. Here is in Bloomington, Monroe County. Okay, thanks.
I like your analogy.
Hunger Games.
It is.
Don't even get me started on mental health services. Every person I've called, they're like, we'd love to add you to a waitlist. How long is your waitlist? We'll call you in March. Oh, okay. Got it.
Are there any other questions or comments about the health insurance proposal?
The next page here is just our total benefits package. So this has, at the top, the pieces that were on that employer cost, but then it also has the pieces that are one-hundred percent voluntary for our staff. And so you can see what they're able to enroll in that we still offer. There's just no cost for the employer. And the changes for the Everside Clinic and our enhanced EAP will impact directly all of our staff. So material handlers, all the way up to full-time staff, will be benefited by those changes.
Of the Everside Clinic is, is it in Bloomington proper?
Yes. So there's one, it's just downtown. I think it's off Sixth Street. It's walking distance from the library. And there's one in Bedford.
Oh, nice. Okay.
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, thank you so much, Becky. We appreciate your guidance. All those in favor of approving the move to Anthem for our insurance and the cost planning update signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. All right. And next, we have a proposal for an artwork donation. Do we have a motion to approve the artwork donation from an IU student?
So moved. Second.
Greer, you want to share with us a little bit about this?
Sure, because this is kind of a rare thing for us. Yeah, we've been approached by someone at Askenazi who has a student who would like to donate their painting of Leonardo da Vinci to the library for use, however we see fit. Canvas work, I believe it's oil on canvas. It's about five feet by seven feet. We don't have an immediate plan as to display it at the moment, but it's something that we would like to accept, in part because it's nice to have pieces like this that we can use wherever we want. But also, we want to connect with folks at IU however we can, and this was a, this was a nice gesture on their part. So we see no reason not to. But our gift policy includes a stipulation that gifts and kind are reviewed on a case-by-case basis by the board and the director. And so that's why we included it in the packet.
Why did they choose us?
Do you know?
Why they choose MCPL?
Not necessarily. They know that we have this gallery space out here, and that we have Southwest that's going to have some artwork spaces. And so I think their first thought was, hey, maybe the library would like to have this.
Under our policy, do we own it? We can use it?
Yes.
We can do anything? We could destroy it?
That's correct. Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, I remember a case in Chicago once where somebody had hired an artist, and they did a public thing in a public square, and then later, they wanted to destroy it. And there was some federal law that kept them, because it was federal money, and they kept them from, and they were stuck with it.
Yeah, our policy, thankfully, stipulates that anyone donating anything relinquishes all rights and control to it. The library uses it as it sees fit.
I think it's a lovely painting.
Yeah, it's pretty cool. But yeah, if we ever wanted to do anything with it like that, I guess we could.
All those in favor of accepting the artwork donation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. And next, we're up to the department presentation. So we have a presentation from the Organizational Development Department by Logan Muma.
Hello, everybody. It's great to be here. I'll introduce myself real quick, since this is my first time being up in front of everyone. I'm Logan Muma. I'm the Organizational Development Manager at MCPL. Before coming to MCPL, I worked in corporate compliance, and before that, as a corporate trainer. And I got my start in my career as a teacher in grade six through twelve in social studies and English. And so at my heart, I am an educator and always will be, and it will stick with me forever. And that is a good reason, a good, you know, point to why I'm so passionate about this particular department, what it's doing, and hopefully will continue to do for the library. So it's great to be here with you all today for the first department update from the Organizational Development Department at MCPL. Since this is your first time being formally introduced to this department since its creation, I'm going to give you some history on how and why the department was created, and talk about what the organizational development is as a practice, who we are at MCPL, and our vision for the future of organizational development at MCPL in the coming months and years. The Organizational Development Department was created out of the recommendations coming from Team Six and Four of the Continuous Improvement Process. Team Six found a need to improve the orientation, onboarding, and overall learning support for staff here at the library. And Team Four recommended the implementation of a more robust performance management system for library employees. The OD department has now been tasked with handling both of these recommendations as large-scale projects to implement heading into 2023. For a second, I'm going to zoom out a bit to what organizational development is, independent of these two very specific use cases. I'll compare organizational development to a kind of workplace sociology. OD looks at the systems and practices at an organization and tries to understand how those systems and practices impact our people. OD is allowing us to make the Continuous Improvement Project a continuous project, and not a single time period in the library's history. So in creating the OD department, we have the opportunity to make the library internally reflect the reality of a modern library. Libraries today are primarily people-development organizations. We do much more than check out books. We provide lots of resources and allow people to become fully themselves and better versions of themselves. The challenge for the OD department is to make sure that we are acting as a people-development organization, both internally as well as externally. The OD department currently includes three team members, myself, Lucy Shake, our Technology Integration Coordinator, and Christine Sneed, our Patron Accounts and ILS Coordinator. In our early work, we've been very heavily focused on the learning side of things. Christine is regularly training new employees on our integrated library system, Polaris. And, sorry, and offers supplemental training for many of our systems that interact with the ILS. Her focus is solely on that Patron Accounts and ILS side of things. So she has been working on that very hard and doing a great job. Lucy is beginning to orient employees to our Intranet, Happio, and UKGHRIS system. IA newly hired librarians through the process of receiving and maintaining library certification. The state of Indiana has a very robust certification process for its librarians. It's one of the more strict ones in the country. You have to apply. You get a certification for a certain level for five years. You have to continue. It operates very similar to a CPA, for anybody who's familiar with that process. You have to get and maintain a certain level of continuing education credits and reapply at the end of that five-year period. The librarians are responsible for maintaining the individual process, but the library itself is responsible for ensuring that we're compliant and that everybody who is required to have a librarian certification has it. I don't know that this has ever happened, but by the rules of the state library, if we were out of compliance with that, we could, you know, lose access to federal and state funding. So it's important that we maintain a good, you know, visibility into where our librarians are with their certification, even though it does ultimately lie with their responsibility. And we want to support them through that. Still, one of the main and biggest aspects of organizational development is appreciating that organizations, our living organisms and solutions, can't be authored or administered by a single team. So we all have taken active roles in orchestrating and helping cross-development, or cross-departmental project teams. Christine was extremely helpful in preparing staff for our first update to the Polaris system in quite some time. Lucy has been helping our program coordinator maximize the effectiveness of technology use in our program planning process to really help that become more effective and efficient, and easier to use for all of our librarians and SIA's who do any type of program planning. And we are still actively working with several project teams to update our onboarding practices and institute a performance management program. We have a lot of work to do, and we're all very excited about it. I could talk about this for a really long time, but I think it'd be a better use of our time for me to just answer any questions about anything that you might be curious about for this newly created department. So with that, happy to answer any questions you may have.
I can share that just the presence of Logan and Christine and Lucy around the library, everything from ongoing training and sort of mapping out professional development goals to sort of spot treating issues they may have with a particular platform, or even our ILS, has been really incredible. And we hear about it a lot from all across the library, all departments. So they're very visible, they're very sort of integrated in what people are doing, and people have a lot of hopes for how we can improve our library certification program, for starters, but also everything that would go into a learning management system in terms of professional development goals. So everybody's excited, which, you know, it sounds like a nerdy thing, organizational development, but it's, everyone at MCPL is really excited about it, so. That's right, not to librarians, yeah.
Thank you. Looking forward to updating you all next time, seeing where the progress is. Thanks.
Before we get to the public comment, I just want to remind the board members, Kyle sent an email to everybody yesterday regarding the director's evaluation. If you could make sure those are completed by Monday, the 21st, which is this coming Monday. We want to get it done before the holidays. And we will plan on holding an executive session either after the work session next month, if we have one. If not, after the regular board meeting in order to take care of the director's evaluation for the year. So just want to remind you to do your homework. All right, so.
One other reminder, too. Same, you've got a little bit more time to complete it, but we still need the internal control certification document from everybody that we sent out, I think, last month. I can resend it to anyone who doesn't have that document in the link to the YouTube video. But this is the thing that every two years, all right, I'll just go ahead and resend it to everybody this week. I'm just looking at your faces. We've got, I think, maybe three of them sent in. So we need them by the end of December. So I'll send that out this week. Yeah.
All of it. Anyway, so it is time for a public comment. Do we have any members of the public that would like to step forward and address the board? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of adjournings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. We're adjourned.